All right, I've got five o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order today, Monday, June fif- July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Roll call, we have select Manhauti Goodwin, Eric Eaton, Mackenzie Jewett, Kevin Buck, myself, Jamie Thurlo, Town Manager Jesse Dunbar, and Town Clerk Sarah Tebbin. Adoption of agendas, is there anything anyone would like to change? Okay, first thing we have is a public hearing for a liquor license. And I will open the public hearing at five oh one. And this is a public hearing for the liquor license of Island Takeout, which is doing business, they're doing business as Hanson's, right? Yeah.
Yep, so they signed a four-month lease with Hanson's to lease the Derry Park. And it was explained to the clerk that the state wanted her to maintain her license. So she did a July meeting and wanted them to apply for their own license as well. They would have been on at the same meeting, but since it's numerous, it technically requires the public hearing in the advertising room before, so that's why it's two weeks later.
Yep. Okay, are there any questions and discussion?
Any questions?
Okay. I'll give it just a second. You Island Takeout?
I am.
Okay. We're in a public hearing for your liquor license.
This is where I sit?
Yes, yep.
And you're gonna be running out of Hanson's out of there. Yep, okay.
That's correct.
All right, any questions, anybody? Okay, I'll close the public hearing at five oh three.
I make a motion to approve the application of Island Takeout LLC, doing business as Island Takeout Two, located at twenty-one Harvard Drive for an on-state, I mean state-on-premise restaurant liquor license.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the application of Island Takeout LLC, doing business as Island Takeout Two, located twenty-one Harbor Drive for a state-on-premises restaurant liquor license. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? That easy? Couldn't make it any quicker than that. Didn't get a chance to sit down. All right, approval of minutes. We have the minutes from July first.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from July first, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Approval of warrants. From FY twenty-four, we have warrant one twenty-six for forty thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and two cents, one twenty-seven for nine thousand two hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-five cents. Then from FY twenty-five, we have warrant two for sixteen thousand seventy-four dollars and twenty-four cents, warrant three for five thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty cents, warrant four for fourteen thousand seven hundred sixty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents, and warrant five for five hundred eight thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars and forty-one cents.
I make a motion to approve warrants one twenty-six and one twenty-seven from fiscal year twenty-four, and warrants two through five in fiscal year twenty-five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants one twenty-six and one twenty-seven from fiscal year twenty-four, and warrants two through five for fiscal year twenty-five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I abstain.
Okay. You got a check on that one, Eric?
On one twenty-seven.
Oh, yeah. All right, next we have committee appointments. First one we have is a library board of trustees. We have one seat with term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven, and we have one applicant, who is Ashley Clausen.
I'm not pleased that she's sorry to join us. I'll make a motion to appoint Ashley Clausen to the library board of trustees with term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Ashley Clausen on the library board of trustees with term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you. And we now have our full panel, so we want to come back for a little while. Thank you.
Good, good. Next we have board of appeals. We have one alternate seat with term expiring at the two thousand and twenty-five town meeting. And Jesse, I didn't see it in here, if you had any?
We just have Richard Cohen, who asked of initial meeting, if he made appointments. Wanted me to see if he was interested in the alternate seat. At that time, he was not. He has since contacted me and expressed that he would be interested in the alternate seat.
And the alternate seat only goes to the meetings if somebody is absent?
If one of the regular full-seat members is absent.
So how does he collect all the information? Like if there's a case coming up and he hasn't been? He gets all the stuff sent to him, just like all the regular board members?
No, he'd have to sign an affidavit that he's brought himself up to speed on the case normally. It would be up to conversation with the alternate and the attorney. But normally, you try and have the same number serve in multiple. If it's something that takes more than one meeting, you try and keep the numbers the same. And you don't, for instance, if the alternate served at the initial meeting and it went to a second meeting, the alternate would continue to serve and the regular number would not.
And they were presumed to call here, right? Like in our attorney's office or something? Got it? Clear.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to appoint Richard Cohen to the alternate seat on the appeals board expiring twenty twenty-five town meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Richard Cohen to the alternate seat on the appeals board expiring at two thousand and twenty-five town meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
I'm in favor.
All right, next we have financial reports.
All right. So these reports in your packet are of May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, which is ninety-two percent of the way through the fiscal year. In May, we collected eighty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars in property taxes, bringing total collections to ninety-seven point two eight percent of the budget. We also collected sixty-four thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars in motor vehicle excise tax, bringing total collections to one hundred and fourteen percent of what was budgeted for the year, well ahead of pace from all recent years. We received one thousand one hundred and forty-seven registration agent fees, one thousand one hundred and seventy-two in building permits, six thousand seven hundred and fifteen in lobster boat race donations, one thousand one hundred and seven from NMA dividends, and approximately four thousand five hundred and ninety-nine in checking interest in May. On the expense side of things, the administration cost center is at ninety-five point three four percent of budget. In May, we have additional expenses of seven hundred and four in office supplies, fifteen hundred and sixty-eight in postage, three hundred and ten in CEO training, eleven hundred and sixty in attorney's fees, and a thousand eighty-six in repairs and maintenance that included being a lawn service and cleaning of the chimney in the town office. The public works cost center is at ninety-three point one eight percent of budget. In May, some notable costs included a thousand fifty-six in repairs, twenty-six hundred and seventeen colors and signs, and five hundred in gas and diesel. In the general ledger, we received eighteen thousand six hundred and sixty-one in revenue sharing from the state in May, bringing total receipts for FY twenty-four to one hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-five, or eighty-eight percent of what was budgeted for the year. And in the rebound reserve, you'll see another payment of the sixteen thousand five hundred that was made for the rebound contract. Otherwise, there's no significant change to the terminal reserve accounts as a matter of fact.
Okay, thank you, Jesse.
I'll make a motion to accept the July two thousand and twenty-three through May two thousand and twenty-four financial reports.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the July two thousand and twenty-three through May two thousand and twenty-four financial reports. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Do you have to ask questions or anything during this?
Yeah.
Who can? All right, I just happened to see that the war count, well, war expenses, there was twenty-some hundred dollars spent on Gosh Island float to pay all the stuff or whatever. Was that correct?
Yep.
Okay, I guess I have to ask why does money be taken out of the war count to be paid for Gosh Island floats? Shouldn't that be coming out of our management to take care of those?
I don't know how, that's a Jesse question. I don't know which account it comes out of. I'm surprised they didn't set up their own, I call it an account, but their own thing for Gosh Island, just to put money aside each year for it, just to keep it separate.
The Sponges and Frenchbrows used to contribute, they would use those. I don't think they still do or not?
Yes.
Yep, they do.
Does that go under our management?
That goes just strictly for those floats, I believe.
Okay, so this is on the gated account?
For the ferry floats. Those go just for the ferry terminal floats. And it's not covering it. We've been over this at a prior meeting. It's not, not even covering the repairs we need on those floats and the ramp and the, you know, morn work. You want me to move on and come back, Jesse?
So right now, I have twenty-three hundred and ninety-three is under ferry terminal float payments, which is under the Harvard font. And then the war fund has a bunch of float payments. Did you say ferry terminal or Gosh Island?
Gosh Island, I think is what he said.
So Gosh Island?
Well, because it's in the memo or whatever, what the twenty-three hundred something would be spent on?
Yeah, that's on.
I think it's on Gosh Island float, because it was when they went out. Nothing's been done to the ferry ones, I know.
Ferry terminal.
Oh, it's ferry terminal?
Yeah.
Well, either way, it shouldn't be coming out of the war fund to repair that stuff.
What's in the memo, the twenty-three ninety-three is ferry terminal, which is out of Harper. Out of Harper.
Oh, it's out of the Harper, okay. Yeah, oh, okay. I see what you're reading now. I see. It says in the war fund, there was eighteen hundred and eighty-seven dollars of repairs to the wharf, and then twenty-three ninety-three to the ferry terminal float repairs, which makes it sound like it comes out of the same fund, but you said it comes out of the harbor?
In the, yes, it's out of the harbor fund.
Yeah.
It just doesn't say that in the memo.
Yeah, yeah. That answered your question.
Yeah.
All right, did we take a vote? No, okay. All those in favor? Okay, next is regular business. First thing we have is Seawall Road. I don't know if I'm optimistic to hear this, but we'll see.
Okay, so I do have some updates, new updates from today. I met Southwest Harvest Manager Marilyn inviting me out to meet with the contractors and her this morning on Seaw- Seawall Road to discuss the donation that those contractors have offered to repair the road. Since I had done some coordinating with the contractors, she asked me to go meet with them with her. So we met three contractors, John Goodman Jr., Incorporated, Doug Donson's, and Beachfront Properties. All three are willing to do the repairs necessary to get the road open and passable for the rest of the season. There's also a donation from Rings Paving regarding paving work to get it paved. There's a question right now around the actual asphalt itself. Rings didn't know at the time how much asphalt it would be, so they said they would donate all the labor work to pave it, and they need to know how much asphalt, and they may or may not be able to donate that. So that's a pending question. The park service met us out there as well. As long as the repair is done to get the road open in the scope of the existing road footprint, the park is not requiring any permits to be obtained by the town of Southwest or the contractors to do that. The DOT has kind of put it on the town of Southwest to do the work and orchestrate the work and make sure that it meets all, you know, environmental requirements and monitor the work and monitor the road afterwards. So that's normally falls under the DOT's jurisdiction, so Marilyn's just trying to work out what exactly the state wants them to do. She spoke with him today, and she's taking with another woman tomorrow who's supposed to give her the details on what exactly that entails. The contractors are ready to move as soon as they give them the go-ahead. She expressed that to the state that, you know, they're willing to pull from what they're doing and get the road open, so let's move. So once she has an answer from the DOT, their board in Southwest is ready to call an emergency selectword meeting to move and sign the proposal that lays out the scope of work. So we'll see. We did get a letter from the DOT this afternoon that they have made their decision regarding the future of the road. It's a long letter, but the point is, point one, main DOT will provide a full repair of the road in the spring of two thousand and twenty-five with additional resiliency features. To prepare for the likelihood that this road will be damaged again over the twenty-four, twenty-five winter, main DOT will enter into an agreement with the town of Southwest Harbor and the National Park Service that will confirm a joint partnership to address damage from future storm events beyond the two thousand and twenty-five repair. And point two is if the town of Southwest Harbor, along with its local contracting partners, would like to make a temporary repair for the remaining summer of twenty-four, main DOT would work with the town to develop an agreement. Southwest Harbor would be responsible for contractor oversight, environmental compliance, and safety. Main DOT would assist with signage. So as of this afternoon, Marilyn's drafted the proposal for the contractors and the town of Southwest Harbor to sign. After she spoke with Dale, it sounds like there needs to be an agreement between the DOT and the town of Southwest Harbor that she needs to draft in the morning when she speaks with the other DOT rep. That's where we're at right now.
It's great.
You said that they would start spring of two thousand and twenty-five?
The full repair, yes, that's what they've stated in the letter.
You think DOT will pay for the pavement if they don't?
She mentioned it on the phone to him today, and he was silent to that statement.
So we'll try to get him to pay for it.
Yeah, even if it's only gravel for the summer, that's your piece.
We'll see. There has also been an offer potentially of somebody else to pay for the asphalt if the state's involved.
I just think it's ridiculous. It's great that all these companies, local companies, will donate their crew and time, but they shouldn't have to. I mean, we pay for this. It's ridiculous. And they could have been open to this idea. When were we first brought this idea in front of them, Jesse? May, I think?
Yeah, months ago.
And they just kept kicking it down the road.
Yep.
I know, it's just frustrating. It's, I don't know.
Thankfully, you and Marilyn have hustled, though. Otherwise, we'd still be kicking rocks down there.
Yep. Okay, thanks for the update. All right, next we have Bass Harbor Lobster Boat Races. Would you like to give an overview of how we got to this point, Jesse? Or do you want me to try?
You can start. I'm filling in the things.
This year's boat races were, basically, I can read some of what you've got here, but it was a big success. There was a three-day weekend of it, tons of prizes. Unfortunately, the weather was crap, so there wasn't as many boats that showed up that normally would. There seems to be some struggle or confusion between the committee that was helping fundraise for this and Colin Rich, who was, normally does a lot of the race stuff, and they, I've read the emails and tried to bring myself up to speed on what's been going back and forth. And I guess I would ask first if you, or any of the people from the committee or Colin would like to speak, and then we'll go on to the next thing.
Okay. I'll defer to you first, since you're the chair of the committee.
I don't know how much information you want. It was a huge success. It was a little bit last minute. At the end, we were really running around doing those banners. I was printing out stuff, I whole, putting it together because we waited so long for the donations. I reached out to Colin in February because I helped him last year, and we had talked about starting a nonprofit or an LLC that would protect the races and protect whoever, you know, not just having one person on the bank statement. And he was gonna get back to me, and then he didn't, and then I was like, I'm either gonna walk away and do nothing, or I was gonna see if you guys, I had heard last year, you guys wanted to be involved, so I reached out to you. And you guys formed a committee, and then we hustled through and really did, the volunteers did amazing. We got so many donations. We got so much help. And the setup and the pickup in that rain was horrible, but we had so many people helping. So anyway, Colin's upset, and he wants to be the only organizer, the only person involved. And John Johansson had emailed back, and obviously, he's only heard from Colin's side. He thought we were having a hostile table here.
That's what it is.
And I, let's, Paul?
Just let her speak first, please.
So anyway, what happened was there was no communication. I couldn't get a hold of Colin, and we moved forward with this, and here we are.
Okay. Colin?
Well, yeah, I'm honestly just confused why we're here talking about this to begin with. Normally, I always, I always get things rolling end of April, early May, and that's the way I've done it the past five years. I've organized it, and it's all run completely fine. As Ellen said, she tried to get a hold of me. I, back, I believe, I'm sure we all remember back in February, there was the whole cell, cellphone meltdown issue. My phone was unfortunately a part of that, and she wasn't able to get a hold of me. Regardless of that, the plan for her would be just to wait for me to contact her, not, not jump ahead and try to take control of things. That being said, I've, I've been the organizer for five years. My old man before that, and Mr. Harper helped, helped him for a couple of years, I believe it was. And we've always, all of us have organized it, have always appreciated everyone that has volunteered their time and made donations or participated in the event. But when it comes to the actual part of who's organizing it and who's in charge, like I said, I've done it for the five years prior, and I'm gonna continue to do it. The Maine Lobster Boat Racing Association, nor myself, recognize any claimed authority over the event from the so-called race committee or the town. And they're, and they will not be recognized by the association on board. So if the, if, I guess, if the event is to continue next year, then, then the town needs to recognize that and officially state that they're withdrawing their claim to organization of it. And left myself with advisor of my old man. If I have any needs of answering questions, along with John Johansson, who's president of the association, to continue on the group plan.
Okay. I guess I don't understand why it's a bad thing to have all these people volunteer and help, because initially, when I look at it, it looks like a great thing. I mean, all these people want to come out and volunteer their time, make, I mean, the event was definitely dragging its heels. I mean, it's, it's gone downhill over the last few years. Everyone knows that. They picked it up and ran with it, act like it was ten years ago. And, I mean, it's great. Why not work with them? Why not just take care of all the stuff on the water and let them take care of the stuff on the dock? Like, I don't understand why it's, why it has to be all you. I don't, I guess I just don't understand that part of it.
And that's what John Johansson said.
I'm not saying that it has to be all me. What I'm saying is, I guess I might not have been clear at first. I'm not saying that it has to be all me. What I'm saying is that any type of, I guess, well, you, you, you read all the emails?
Yeah.
Between myself and the town and all that?
I read the one from John Johansson in there too, who agreed that, said, why doesn't Colin take care of the stuff on the water and let someone else do a lot of the stuff organizing, don't, you know, fundraising, stuff like that? It's a, I think that's a perfectly great compromise. I don't, I don't see that why there's an issue with it.
Well, the issue is when, the issue is when people jump the gun and start doing things behind my back on an event, on an event that I've ran basically solo the last five years, and it's been an incredible turnout. And we're, we are going to basically, everyone who's an official member of the MLVRA, that we're the smoothest event of the, of the circuit.
I don't, I guess, I'm not sure if you're answering what I'm asking. I don't, I just mean why that's still letting you continue to do all the stuff on the water? You can do all of the registrations, do all that. That's what they're talking about. That's what John said, what he's concerned with is the stuff on the water. He doesn't care about the prizes and all that stuff. That's not, that's not his thing. This would, you could do that and still allow them to do all the fundraising and make, I mean, it was a heck of a weekend, you know, with the lobster bake and the whole nine yards. And I just hate to, to, you know, put a sour taste in people's mouths so they don't want to volunteer anymore. That's...
Well, I'm, so like I said at the beginning, I appreciate anyone who, and we all have, appreciate anyone who comes and offers their time to help out. But when I'm, but when I'm told, hey, you've been, you've basically been, you've basically been overthrown- But when I'm, but when I'm told, hey, you've been, you've basically been, you've basically been overthrown by a town-formed committee, as I'm getting, getting the ball rolling with things, that just pisses me off. And I, it just, no.
Colin, that's, that's not what we.
I've, I've done this, like I said, I've done, I did it my, completely by myself outside of Beth Lawson doing the Coast Guard permit for three years. And we had the, in 2020, when we had COVID, we had the second largest turnout. And the, and it was the fastest event of the, of the entire year with me doing it solo. So I'm, basically what I'm saying is I welcome anyone who volunteers, but being, but going ahead and telling me that I'm no longer in, I'm in charge of an event, that I am in charge of, and then basically.
Colin, you were told you weren't in charge of the prizes because you didn't do any work.
It involves, it involves, I'm the organizer.
No, just, hey, just no arguing.
You're not gonna let people do all the work and then come in and take all the glory. That's what's happening here. You want, yes, it is, Colin.
What's hap, what's happening is you, you hold, you.
I didn't go behind your back. I went to your dad and said, I have been reaching out to Colin. I cannot get ahold of him. People are contacting me about race stuff. I don't know what's going on. You didn't get ahold of me till like May 9th or something.
When I normally start the, when I normally start.
Colin, you and I had already been talking. Why did you just stop talking? That is very inconsiderate. How do you expect people to work with you if you don't communicate? So all we did was talk to the town. We got thousands and thousands of dollars of donations. And then we decided how to divvy them up equally. And that is what made you so upset.
Well, no, no. What made me upset is when you, when you go ahead and say, buddy, you're not in charge.
You're not in charge of the gifts, of the donations.
It involves Bass Harbor Lobster Races. I'm the organizer. I have final say.
You didn't do anything, Colin.
All right, all right. Guys, guys, let's just settle down. We don't wanna turn into an argument. Let's.
Can I just say something?
Yeah, Bonnie.
I feel like, you know, none of us want the glory for the boat races. We all do this because we love our community and we wanted to create a three-day event. It wasn't just the boat races.
Yeah.
A lot more than that. And I just feel like we invited Colin, you know, when he got wind of the committee. We said, come, we invited anybody who wanted to come. And it was an open forum. And the fir, for the first few meetings, he never said a word. And then all of a sudden, there was this issue with the COGS and how they were gonna be giving out by whoever donated them. And then it became a big issue. And then there was the, the back and forth about I'm in charge, you're not in charge, I don't recognize you. And then it went south. And we've had a couple of meetings that have been pretty angry meetings. You know, it's been a little bit uncomfortable with his presence. And, you know, we just, we're not there to argue.
I know.
About whose stuff is whose and we don't care. We really don't care.
This is supposed to be a community event. It's supposed to be a positive thing. There shouldn't be any, you know, we shouldn't be having this argument. I don't, you, you won't agree, Colin, to just letting them take care of the stuff, the prizes and everything, and then you do all the stuff on the water? I feel like that's about as fair of a split as you could do with the whole thing.
When it comes to, I guess, making a compromise, as Jesse put it in the, in the emails, if, they're wel, they're welcome to do whatever they want to do over the weekend for the Backside Blast, for the Friday and Saturday events. As for, as for the Bass Harbor Lobster Races themselves, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with doing it on my own. And it's a hell of a lot less stressful and headache than having people try to, try to push me around.
Colin, they don't wanna push you around.
I, I think this event has progressed. You have built it up in some ways and it has gotten so big that it needs a committee. You need help. You don't wanna admit it, but I think you need it.
I, I don't. I did it completely fine so.
I've been to almost every one of them. This is one of the best ones in the rain. You had good votes out of town, good votes in town. It great. Colin's is good. It's just gotten so big, so much money and donations.
And Cooley notes, and then we do appreciation from you.
That was, that was under them.
No, you said five years. Did you not?
Yeah. I think you recognized everybody. Thank you, criminals.
Yeah, Mackenzie.
Colin, you, if you're responsible for the water park, how come you didn't get the permits then? They still went and got the Coast Guard permits and the permits for the war. You know, how come you dropped that?
I was in communication with Beth Lawson and she was already working on the permits in the end of, in the end of February, early March. And then she said that everything was all set to go. And I said, great, thank you. And I went on assuming everything was all set to go and I had the permit and then.
But if you're in charge, you didn't follow up with that? You assumed somebody else did, right?
Because I got, I got, she forwarded me a confirmation email that the Coast Guard sent her saying that the, saying that the permit had been submitted. And I always get, I always get a phone call about two weekends before from the head of permits from the Coast Guard down in Portland, saying that everything's all set to go.
But do you see that as a time crunch? Like, you didn't get back to Ellen until May. The boat races are almost the end of June. It's a very short amount of time to pull all of the things together and get everything organized. And you're using terms like overturned you and hostile takeovers. It's like, what?
Well, the, with, with, with all, with all respect to everyone on the board, that's the very, that's the very definition of what happened when I wasn't even notified by the town or anyone that, 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 that meeting was even gonna happen.
Were you invited to the committee meetings?
When he started, when he got ahold of me in May, he brought the money for the t-shirts from the year before and that's when he started coming to meetings.
But you, but you contacted, hang on a second. But you contacted him right when the committee was first formed?
Yeah, I, I, I tried to get ahold of him for so long, I stopped trying to get ahold of him.
Okay.
I talked to Cooley.
That was before there was even the committee.
I told him that I needed to find out the name of the person that was doing the cookout because I needed to contact her. And then I was gonna go to you guys.
That's, that's, that's the very, that's the very, that's the very thing here, is you don't need, you, you aren't the person in charge. You don't need to get ahold or contact anyone.
Listen though, Colin, the PTO was reaching out to me because they wanted to do lunch. And I said, Colin told me that these people wanted breakfast and lunch. So they were in limbo trying to know what they were gonna do. So I reached out to your dad because I didn't know her name. So I found out her name. I looked it up. I talked to her. She said, no way did they want breakfast. And maybe she wanted to maybe cook out. And then she talked to her people and got back to me. I wasn't, I wasn't trying to undermine you. People were reaching out. When you're trying to have a well-willed machine, it needs to be done in time and fashion. You can't wait till the last minute. Last year when I was talking to them.
Seven four, seven years past.
They were telling, I was hearing that they weren't gonna give you a permit. And I was like, whoa, whoa. I was just helping organize stuff and you gotta have the permit, right? And the looks I was getting, I mean, Colin, you and I talked and agreed that it needed to be an LLC or a nonprofit. And I found out that the nonprofit is a lot of work for one day to have it be a nonprofit. So I talked to my lawyer and she said an LLC. Well, I wasn't gonna start the LLC all by myself with you not answering me. I have enough going on in my life. I didn't need a whole new thing to navigate yearly. And you would not answer me.
Then let it go.
So that's what I was gonna do. I was gonna let it fall on its face, or I was gonna help. And I love Tremont. And I love the boat races that my kids went to when they were little. And that is not what we've been doing the last few years. Last year was a step up and this year was a huge step up. And it was a group effort. It was not one person. It is not the Colin Rich races or the Ellen Mitchell races. It's the Bass Harbor races. And everybody wants to be a part of it because it's something awesome in our town. That's all.
Then my, then my break something and it's not broken.
It was.
It is broken.
No, it's not.
It was broken.
It would not.
You were not getting good reviews. It was kinda going down badly. After corona and COVID, that was great. But it wasn't, it wasn't going well. There were people that wanna ask for donations, but go, I'm not giving anything if he's involved. And I'd be like, oh, what? No. And, I mean, it was a little awkward and.
Okay, well, you want, you wanna talk about.
Guys, guys, let's just stop arguing back and forth. Colin.
Anyone who wants to have their opinion is welcome to have their opinion.
But again, it was not a problem. It's a matter.
Guys, hello. Stop. Colin, cut it. I've heard enough. That's it. No more back and, back and forth. It's ridiculous. This is absolutely ridiculous. I don't know why you won't give one inch. It's, it's, there's no reasoning with you.
I shouldn't have to give anything when I'm being.
You never even showed up to the safety meetings or any of that stuff. They had to take care of all that too. That's part of the on-the-water stuff. Happens every year. Your father knows that. They have to, now we have to do it because the Coast Guard makes you. And all, you were invited to it. I mean, you're, you're acting like you've been there the whole thing and done the whole nine yards. You haven't even done the on-the-water part.
Until, until this year, I've done.
Yeah, but this year, I'm talking about this, I don't know the price. I'm talking about what it was.
That's because they had everything half-done before I even knew that they had started things, getting things going.
All right, Dean.
I mean, I can remember, I think I was on the roost, I mean, I think probably Kevin was, at one point in time, I think it was Cooley came and proposed to town about taking over the Backside Lobster Race. And I don't think anything ever became of it. The town didn't want it. I don't know. I can't.
I, I do. I remember the conversation, Dean. That's, I kept thinking that. Cause I mean, I, I don't know if it was you, Cooley, or who brought it to the town. I'm trying to remember, but it's like, it's a lot of work for one person.
Yeah.
And you were kinda asking for help at that point. And I, I didn't think it was that long ago, Dean, but I, I do remember the conversation. And I don't think anyone had any intention of taking anything over. I mean, it never occurred to me up here when we formed the committee. Never occurred to me it was a takeover. It was trying to help make things go smoothly. And I think that's the way everyone felt. I don't, this, no one's trying to take anything away from you. It's just, it's a lot of work and people are trying to help. I mean, I, I know that's what I felt when we had to vote and form the committee. I had no idea anyone was trying to exclude you. I don't think anyone was. But that's, definitely wasn't our sentiment when we voted.
And I know Cooley's told me.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna basically openly say that you, that the members of the, that the members of the board were trying to do that. But it would have been appreciated to at least get a phone call from the town or some, someone of, someone of the town to notify me that there was gonna be a meeting to even discuss this.
Yeah, I don't. I know, Cooley, you've told me before how much work there is into it. And I thought that this is just being a benefit. I mean, it's a lot for one person to try to handle. Like, it's just taking relief off of you. It's not a, shouldn't be a bad thing. It, I, I don't know. But I don't know where to move on from here. I.
Like I said, I think it's just gotten so big that it needs a committee.
Yeah.
It needs more people responsible, regardless of any rumor or anything that's going around. People don't wanna donate all that money and they wanna know where it's going and who's handling it. And it's gotta be more than one person. When you start collecting that much money, when you have that many people in the town property, there has to be permitting. There has to be responsibilities, liabilities, communication. You know, and that's.
It's also cleaner to do it through the town. Then not one person is responsible for the money or any of the, I mean, it's just cleaner to do it through the town.
You're in for all alone. But it's just gotten big. It's gotten great.
Colin, I would discuss what it would be.
So does that mean you're willing to make a compromise or?
You gotta, the, the town-formed committee is welcome to organize the events for Friday and Saturday for the races. If it seemed, if it seemed by the town that, that, that the opinion of the board is that I can't do it solo, then I'll form my own, my own committee to help me organize the races. But.
And you can't, you can't do them all the town, dog, if, if you don't have a permit from the town. I know you say it's a public place, but you need to have a permit to have any public, any private event down there, which is the same thing is.
Regardless of that, I'm, I'm not gonna get into an argument of that. It'll never end. But state law says, whereas it's a public, it's a public access, state law says that's public engagement. But regardless of that, I can do, I can do sign-ups and prizes right on the, right at the finish line. Like, like a majority of the rest of the events up and down coast do.
Yep.
Well, then I think if that happens, it should be called the Colin Rich Races so that people don't assume that Bass Harbor is involved and responsible for any of it.
Yeah.
She's right.
Yeah, and I would resign completely.
Well, I don't wanna see anybody give up on, yeah.
But I just don't think that's fair that he can call it the Bass Harbor Boat Races when he is anti-Bass Harbor being involved.
Let's just try to keep the committee formed. Keep doing what you're doing for now. Just do the, you know, plan for Friday and Saturday. And, you know, I know a lot of people have talked about having fireworks this year. And I've heard a lot of people say, why don't we do fireworks? Like, and then I know Bonnie gave me a rough idea how much the fireworks were in Southwest. And I said that, you know, I think we could pull that off.
We, we can do a shorter show. It's not the experience. We did a few fireworks on a little jar.
Yeah, my dogs really did.
Yeah.
Fire marshal is involved. Fire marshal is a part of this.
Yeah. Yep.
I would like to add one thing. When we left the other night, there was two words thrown in our direction from the committee that I didn't appreciate. That's all I'm gonna say about that.
Okay. All right. You don't need anything from us then any further. What would you?
No, not on that subject at the moment.
Okay. I didn't know if you want a motion or anything or?
No, I just need a motion on the second card about regaining the funds.
Okay.
Oh, form some kind of, what, a down?
Yeah, live right now, but just, just receiving it.
I'll make a motion to authorize moving the leftover 2024 lobster boat race funds to the newly created, what do we?
You wanna call it?
What do you wanna call it?
Bass Harbor Backside Blast.
Bass Harbor Backside Blast?
Or Bass Harbor Days?
We call it Backside Blast.
Backside Blast Reserve, to be established at the 2025 Annual Town Meeting.
Okay, it's been moved in second to authorize moving the leftover 2024 lobster boat funds to a newly created Backside Blast Reserve to be established at the 2025 Annual Town Meeting. Is there any discussion?
Roughly how much? I'm sure.
Roughly $7,000.
Sorry.
All those in favor? Okay. Moving on to the next thing. We have a consent agreement.
In your packets is a copy of a consent agreement, Code Department Office has drafted in regards to property of 54 Park Point Road. They've identified a violation on the property, gone through a notice violation process. And have, have had discussions with the landowner and they've come up with this consent agreement to resolve those violations. And I pointed out in my memo, but I wanted to be clear that the town is not compromising anything through the agreement other than the timeframe. I'm sure a lot of you are used to some consent agreements. The town is giving up, you know, or rule, or being lenient to the rule. That's not the case with this one, other than giving up extra time to do what we want with the notice violation set. So the consent agreement requires them to comply with applicable rules and pay a fine for the violations. These are limitations to the code office. They also are not allowed to use the dwelling unit as a dwelling unit for rent or ad물 as it's until all outstanding fines are paid and asked soon to be installed.
And what happens if they do?
If they do, then it'll come back to you in an eighty K.
Okay.
So they have to pay their fine by September 15th? But they have to, when to get all the permits?
They have the 15th to get it signed and then they have 60 days to, from the, whenever they earn it, they have 60 days to install the system.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the consent agreement between the Town of Tremont and PJ and Peter J. Catron.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve and sign the consent agreement between the Town of Tremont and PJ and Peter J. Catron. It's been moved in second to approve and sign the consent agreement between the Town of Tremont and PJ and Peter J. Catrone. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, next we have harbor master's office replacement. I'll first say, because I know Jesse doesn't like it that I asked him to get a quote from his father, but his father did such a good job on that upper lot and the surrounding area that I said we really would like to have him do that same, you know, complete the job, not have a different contractor there. I know you asked for multiple bids, but I know he's the only one that had a bid in there, um, for the groundwork. And then, um, the buildings, I've looked through.
Yep. Those three, they're all the same, um, size of the committee.
And you know, how do my two cents, I've said from the get-go was put it on the slab and stick build it, but I know these are probably quicker and whatever, but I just, I hate having a subfloor and a crawl space and then he's fucking a rod or something, so, but it works, whatever.
I think one, one of the benefits of the, of this option, the rebuild is, in my experience so far in going out to bid, um, the ten for bids tend to be higher when the town is seeking bid versus somebody else getting bid. So I do like the fact that rebuilds, that's the price everybody pays, so we're not giving a elevated price there. I do think it would be a lot faster as well, um, than we need for a contractor to do it.
Now, this is gonna come unframed on the inside, so we're gonna have to frame it, wire it.
Um, yes, you'll have to do the wiring, yeah, finishing. Um, there is, let me check.
I just didn't know if you could have him do a wall for the bathroom or any partitions that he might want.
He usually can, um, so I can talk to Tyler about it. I know one I had previously, it was like, one of the previous dwellings I ordered, I asked them to do that, and it was a hundred and sixty bucks.
Yeah, exactly. Yep.
A wall, um, so we can, we can look at that. I want to see it on the.
And these were all insulated. I saw some of it on, on some of them, but they're all spray foam?
No insulation at all.
No, I think one of them showed it was.
Really? I didn't see it. Smart panel.
That was the floor that was spray foam.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And what was, that was Hillview.
Yeah.
I know, I've seen, I don't have a ton of experience with these, but the ones that I've seen from Hillview minibikes have been very well constructed, so I think there, it seemed to be a, I mean, look at the price, how you buy materials for that.
Um, you know, the only thing, they've all got little porches on them, it seems kind of useless. I would think it'd be better just to have an indoor space, you know, for storage or, or whatever, but I don't see where it needs a little porch. But other than that, looks like a good idea.
And I wonder if the, how do you, with the, because I would think obviously the foundation wouldn't go underneath the porch, correct?
No, it'd go over the whole thing that's, um.
Including the porch? So would that, how would your water drain? If it drained down through, would it go in the? That's the only thing I was thinking of. You're gonna have a, it's gonna be a little foot, right? Like a two-foot wall.
It's gonna be a slab with a two-foot needwall on top.
Yep. I'm just thinking of water going through the porch, going down into that concrete.
You'd have to seal that somehow, so.
Yep.
Yeah, by the twenty-eight is the porch, by the twenty-eight, correct?
Yep.
Can we get one without the porch, just full twenty-eight? I mean.
I would assume so.
I would think that's what we would want.
That would make more sense.
They ain't port swinging out there.
Square it off.
Yep.
Yep, I would need some.
Yeah, or shorten it up a few feet and have them do a little deck on the front. You know, if you wanted, you're gonna need something to like, walk down on, you know, a little landing.
Take them stairs up, they all have a mess shack.
Yeah, there you go.
Make everything ugly.
Yeah.
You know, the only other thing I could think of, it might be worth putting it up one floor and having a workspace, you know, a shop where they could get boats or whatever inside. And that's one of those things you probably could do down the road anyway, if it looked like it began necessary, because you could just lift these.
Yeah.
And, and put it up. I mean, I don't, so I mean, I, I, as long as you got it so, you know, I would make it so it was easily, you could stick a wall under it at some point if it really looked like it made sense. To me, that's relatively inexpensive space when you go into all this work, and it would be nice to have a place where the harbor master could work on things indoors.
You got any kind of idea about insulation costs and electrical costs?
Not right now.
But probably another fifteen thousand.
I saw, I looked them up online just to see the other day, and I saw someone was selling them wired with pine, nice pine siding on the inside for like twenty-eight thousand, for roughly that size, and I mean, it looked beautiful. I mean, more than you need for a harbor master shack, but for the price, I was like, I can't believe. And it was all, windows were trimmed in there, doors were trimmed, the whole nine yards.
Um, we currently, as for the boat thing, we do currently have the plan to use the garage.
Okay, yeah, that's right. I didn't know what that was.
Effective, um, November first.
Never mind that.
Dean, did you have a question?
Yeah, so you guys don't know basically how much this is gonna cost, ready to walk into, start using it? I mean, because you get the price of the building.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
When you guys end up finding out how much it's actually going to cost for the groundwork and?
We have the groundwork quote right here. That's, we're just talking about the building right now, and then that's part of the, the, the groundwork estimate's about fifteen, roughly fifteen thousand for the concrete and the groundwork and everything. And these buildings range from fourteen, twelve, oh, nine thousand roughly. Um, so that plus, yeah, I'm sure the inside, that's what I'm just thinking. If you, if you, I don't know if they, I wonder if Hillview offers doing the insides?
Uh, they do. The ones I've seen were around sixty.
Oh, wow. Because I was just thinking that if it was as minimal of cost as what I saw, then it might be better off to have them just drop it off all done. Turnkey.
I've looked at a couple, but they've been over, over five.
Yeah, go ahead.
One other question, I guess. Where is the funding coming from for this?
Jesse, where were we pulling? I know we had.
So the town meeting, um, voted to loan forty thousand dollars from the surplus fund, the town surplus fund, um, to loan it to the war fund to be repaid, um, in four thousand dollar increments, agreed July first. And then there's ten thousand in the actual budget from the war fund, um, draft by twenty-five. So there's a total of fifty at the moment, um, available for this.
So the war fund is paying for this harbor master building? Okay.
Yep.
Why is it that the town is not picking up on the tab? Is it, the harbor master is employed by the town? It's a town duty type deal or whatever? It seems to me like the war fund should be spent to repairing the war and stuff like that. Because originally the house was rented, which the funds went to the war committee, or the war facility funds and stuff. This just seems like something completely separate from anything to do with the war facility. I mean, I know it's harbor master shack and stuff, but I mean, it doesn't seem right that it should be funded by the, the war itself.
But wouldn't you think if the, if the house rent went to the war fund and, I mean, that would, it's on the same property, this, you know, it would pay.
Different use, in my opinion, type deal.
Okay. Because I'm surprised that didn't go to there, because I would, I would think that that would go to the town.
Just like the garage.
Yep.
I mean, because I don't know the specifics of it exactly, that deal, but I know it's always been supported by funds or fees through permits and stuff or whatever. And this just seems something completely different of a use for that. I mean, if the garage funds go through the war facility type deal and stuff. And I mean, this, in my opinion, this is more to do with, it's a town business, being a harbor master, a harbor master place.
No, I, I see where you're coming from. I just, I think that if we, because we put it on for voters, I feel like they voted to do this, so.
All, all this has been explained to me since I've been here is that the town funds have not been and are not to be used for the war and the harbor and so forth, that they must be using their own generated funds for all of the activities.
Due to the fact that a lot of townspeople may not use that warp or harbor.
It would make things a lot easier sometimes, if the town paid for them, but.
But then people are gonna say, why, why am I paying for this? Because I don't use it at all. The fishermen use it.
Right, so that's just the way it's been.
And the warp is borrowing this from the town and they're paying payments.
The town.
Zero interest.
Correct, right, sorry.
Yeah. I guess my point is, I mean, I just don't think the warp should be paying for it, I mean, because it's not to do with the warp type deal. I mean, you're housing the harbor master, it's a place for him to operate his business, which is.
The warp.
Not necessarily the warp, because he oversees harvest, all kinds of other things, that deal. And I don't know how the funding for the harbor master's pay is. I know how it used to be, that part of it was taken from harbor management, war management, and contributed by the town.
Yeah, they used to do town crew work though, and they don't anymore. So that was, when we dropped him from that, I think we dropped him from town contribution, right, Jesse? Or no, we picked back up again.
Right now, this year's the first year that's, just the town is paying for harbor master salary.
Yep.
So there's, no cost to the war fund and the harbor funds for the harbor master.
None of the salary comes out of those accounts.
Correct. So those, those fund balances will generate.
Yep.
Although twenty, there'd be more than normal, because they won't reimburse the town for the harbor master expense. Because he does function, as you're saying, he's, we're required, as harbor master is part of town administration.
Yep.
So that's why we will have to ship.
No, I understand where you're coming from. I just think this one is, uh, you know, where it went on the ballot, I think it's already been decided from, you know, the voters. I wouldn't go against.
The garage and harbor master stuff, right?
Yes.
Yes, yep.
I would say, you know, it's up to, we can talk about it come budget time.
Yep.
As to if you want to look at the avenues for splitting the repayment.
Mm-hmm.
Back to the town, splitting it from war fund harbor, um, we can look at that come budget.
The transient rental fees go to harbor fund, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So that might, it might be worth splitting it.
Yep.
I, I think that probably what those are doing lately, last few years, almost cover the payments on there, wouldn't it?
I haven't seen anyone on it this year hardly at all.
There's been one boat there.
Yeah, one boat, but I mean, it's.
This year's, um, picking up a little more.
Yeah, because Justin had it, just loaded with boats, and this year, I thought of it the other day when I was off there, there's only one, one boat, and then I saw a small little sailboat one day.
Yeah, I've seen a couple boats, but just that one power boat's the only one that's been there much.
So, um, does anyone else, what do you think about the having, well, obviously, everybody said twelve by twenty-eight is a fine size. Just make it full twelve by twenty-eight, no porch, right? Yep, instead of having a porch on there. And then, um, you said the cost of interior were a ton.
I'm looking, I'm trying to find, I mean, similar size, a little longer, on Hillview was forty-eight finished.
And I know we don't need to be fancy in that. It just needs to be basic. I just don't want to have to hire someone to, is, would Tyler do some of it? Because I know he's a carpenter, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes, that's a possibility.
Okay. Yeah, if he'd be willing to do some of that, that would help reduce that a ton.
Yep.
Yeah.
What size is the current harbor master building?
Oh, what is it? Twenty eighteen, uh, long by twelve wide or something?
Twelve by eighteen, that's how.
Yeah, twelve by, Justin told me. I can't remember.
What's the possibility of you moving that over there in the second quarter?
I know. I don't, for this price right here, I don't think you can even get anybody to add on to it for that. I mean, we're talking nine thousand dollars for a brand-new, you know, building delivered? You know how much stuff costs now? That would be, that's, because that one needs chingles. You know, you can tell that a mile away. And the one that's there, geez, I don't, I was surprised when I saw that, that I can't even imagine you can build it for that.
What is the price on one of these twelve by twenty-eights?
Yeah, nine thousand.
Nine thousand for the building?
Yeah, no, and that's what I just said. Yeah, you can't even buy the two by fours for that. Like, I don't, and that was, uh, two by six rafters, sixteen on center, um, four by four skids, lifetime metal roofing, that smart siding that's got a five-year warranty, Advantech flooring, so fifty-year flooring.
Actually, they charge you seven ninety-five for the porch.
Yeah, it's really only seventy-eight hundred and five dollars. Yeah, so I said I don't think you can add on for what you got there. Yep. Um, and is there anything on the groundwork? I know I said prep pad, line to the lift station.
I think I'd get them to do the floor, spray foam the floor too, and they were, they were the same ones. I don't think that was included on the first price, but.
What is it? The minibike one?
Yeah. Um, that was Hillview offered it. But I mean, I think before it shows up there, it'd be really good to have that, John. The rest of it you could insulate on, so.
I wouldn't mind seeing the final price before we move forward. With the, an estimate on insulation, electrical, and interior sheathing.
And ask Tyler if he's willing to do the sheathing on the inside. Insulating and sheathing, actually, would be.
We're talking about plywood and pink insulation, right?
Yep.
And then paint over the plywood.
Yeah. Right now at Home Depot, you can get a sheet of half-inch plywood for almost the same as.
Hundred bucks?
OSB, now it's like twenty-one, twenty-three dollars, something like that, for regular sheath of half-inch. It's very, you know, surprising how it's gone down.
I do like the look of the old, or the, the Hillview roof style.
Yep.
Just a regular pitch roof, not the bottom style.
Now, did that include a window in there? Hang on. I just want to be sure, because it said on the back.
Which one? I'll look at it.
Uh, Hillview. It kind of said.
It was on the second page.
As an option. Three windows, or three hundred dollars a piece, you know, if you want to have windows in there, which definitely, you're gonna want windows in there.
Couple of them here.
Yeah, at least two.
What kind of, uh, are you gonna just move that monitor into there, or are you thinking?
Put a heat pump, because you run off from the, the grid here anyway. You run off from the, it's free electricity, basically.
Yep.
But what are the heat pumps cost? Five grand or?
No. We just were having one that was three, under three for.
Twenty-six.
Yeah.
That's the whole setup?
Yeah, that's installed, turnkey. I was just telling them before the meeting, it was twelve-year warranty with a tail, like, twelve-year maintenance, twelve-year everything for, for a smaller place, you know, that's. Yeah, so I would, I agree with you Eric, get a, a better, more firm price, but I would do, um, definitely include windows, obviously. I don't think we need- But if you insulated it, Dean, every possible option. Well, basically, yeah, with Bennett's office, I mean, all of the extras, thirteen thousand dollars. That's, like, how do you even do it?
What do you guys intend on putting, to be putting on where the existing foundation was? Are you gonna get it up higher so that it drains into the seepage bed? Naturally type deal or?
No, there's a pump right there. There's a, that-
So you're gonna keep it on the lower level?
Yeah, well, kind, yeah, a little bit.
And it'll be above heckle.
Yeah, Danny, when he was doing the other work down there, I just walked in with him and he, there was, it's elevated by like, what, three, four feet? And then time you build up from there, another couple of feet, you know, and it's tapered. You won't really notice it's three or four, but it was a nice little spot. Right by where like the porch used to be on the house, kind of the porch towards, porch towards Thurston's. That's all, you know, right, there's a little pump in there that, um, it won't stand out much. It was a pretty good little, little spot right there. Um, do you guys wanna do the groundwork so that we can get, at least he can get rolling on that? Or at least plan? Cause I don't wanna be late before, you know, if he gets a minute between now and whenever you get the rest of this together.
As long as that's the final size, uh-
I mean, he could just prep for this. Obviously, we'll know in a week if, what size, but he can do all the prep work minus the slab.
Yeah, you just won't review, you're not meaning to get to August fourth of the, I'm not saying that's a problem, but I'm just pointing it out.
Yeah. Well, if it needs to get done, in the meantime, we can just do a special meeting, um, just to, just to okay the building, just so it doesn't slow anything down.
Yeah. Yeah, the groundwork should be, I don't think the size of the building is gonna change.
Yeah, so this is, he included about seventy-five feet of driveway, which is more like flattened out area. Um, twelve by twenty-eight pad for the building, uh, tie into the existing water line and sewer line, uh, backfill for both of those. And put a berm up against the backside and riprap if you need to keep that from coming down in. We talked about a little ditch in the, between the building and the seepage bed up there. Uh, and then a six-inch slab with a two-foot knee wall and a riprap the front crust for basically fifteen thousand.
God, I'd be so tempted to make that knee wall six feet taller.
Oh, no. That's when you can get in the money. How much more money have you?
What's that?
Just right off top of your head, going from a two-foot knee wall to an eight-foot knee wall. I mean, eight-foot wall. He doesn't even-
Let me think what it was for that. It's gonna be probably double what my price was gonna be.
Yeah.
You could always stick Raymond down the road too if you wanted.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a slab there anyways.
Yeah, if you ever want to do so. That is one good thing with these buildings. You can lift them or move them or whatever, so.
Yeah, it wouldn't be much of a project to lift that and put a slug wall under it.
Yeah.
Probably could leave Daniel almost.
Yeah.
Cause you gotta mention about the garage pad that's gonna cease being rented until November, whatever the deal. What is the intended use for that in the future?
I think we talked about, cause originally when everybody looked at Harbor Master's Shack and, and I think of the Harbor Master Shack is this. This is what, and then, um, the Harbor Committee had discussed it and they talked about having room to work on the boat and the floats and build the finger floats and stuff like that in there. So then the, the building was, we were talking about was big and expensive. And I, um, I think Danny's kind of about done using that building down there anyway, uh, you know, bait. So, um, I think it was just good timing and we'd have to put little to no money into it and just use that instead. Instead of spending money out of pocket to, you know, to have a spot to do that stuff. But yeah, it would be to store the boat and one at a time, build floats, uh, maintain floats and stuff like that. And I think he's, I, I don't think it was gonna get rented beyond that amount of time anyway, so.
Well, I mean, because, I mean, there are other lobster buying outfits out there that might like to come down there type deal. And you take the twelve thousand dollars out of the income for the Wharf Facility and let me see, that's just gonna be passed on to the fishermen. And you're talking basically nowadays is a ten cents differential between dogs and up there. So you figure out if the bridges gets rebuilt, you're probably gonna lose people then. You just wanna keep in consideration in the future that if income keeps getting less and less and less and the price fees keep going up and up and up, guy's gonna go to Thurston's, guy's gonna go to Riddges'. It's just doing away with all the income, cause we've lost roughly twenty thousand dollars from that facility over the last, well, selling it over October. Because the house used to generate close to ten grand and that's been twelve. So you're talking twenty grand that's been lost over time to the Wharf type deal. And sometimes things may reverse to less and less and less fish in the Wharf type deal. So I just wish you guys keep that in mind.
Yeah. But remember, they did, they gained twenty-five thousand this year by the town footing the bill for the Harbor Master. So that offsets it plus some.
And that was, that was one of the main reasons and the fact that obviously expenses keep going out for everything.
Yeah.
And the town does not want to keep raising its fees. So one of those big expenses is salary and benefits that obviously increase from the cost of living. So therefore by removing that, we're not, you know, that's going to increase. So we're not continually increasing the expenses in the Wharf. Yes, all the other things will go up, but it's taking a huge portion out of it to try and slow the increase and prevent raising.
So, so the Harbor Master's salary back to the ground, twenty-five grand?
From the Wharf and additionally from the Harbor.
So it's roughly twelve, five, it's your whatever each?
No, no, twenty-five each.
Each, twenty-five each?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, you should have applied for that job. He's had the numbers in his head and he's like, wait a minute.
No, I believe that's gone up.
No, I know. Double that, it's not looking good. Okay, so does anybody wanna do anything with the groundwork for now or do you wanna wait or I'm just afraid of waiting too long as my only?
Yeah, get it, that's a good roll on.
Yeah.
I make a motion to authorize contracting with Dunbar and Sons excavation for groundwork at the Wharf at a cost not to exceed fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize contracting with Dunbar and Sons excavation for the groundwork at the Wharf at a cost not to exceed fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I abstain.
Okay, next we have cemetery lot sales. Um, we have one lot, excuse me, in the Hillrest Cemetery.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to sell lot C twenty-one in Hillrest Cemetery to Bonnie and Jason Barnesworth.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the town manager to sell lot C twenty-one in the Hillrest Cemetery to Bonnie and Jason Barnesworth. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Next is town manager's report.
All right, over the last couple of weeks, um, I've had several meetings and conversations with residents regarding taxes and rebounds. Um, and that would be chair of sustainability committee. I've had multiple meetings and site visits with FEMA regarding the storms from January, continuing filling out FEMA paperwork and forms regarding the public assistance. Several meetings on steamboat work room and the damaged layer. Um, we're gonna do the small temporary, well, it wouldn't be permanent, but emergency repair that you guys authorized in a prior meeting. Um, but I've reached out to FEMA and they may be able to wrap all of that damage, which is more extensive than we thought, um, into the January storm public assistance. So they sent out people last week to do a site visit. Um, let's see where that goes. So we might get funding from FEMA for those repairs. Worked on the financial reports and attended last week's planning board meeting. Office staff did the BMB reports, titles and most reporting and year-end reporting closeout by twenty-four. Public works, um, did all kinds of mowing and trimming, cemetery is here, um, picked up the new lawn tractor, uh, moved the speed signs, speed radar sign to the light house road. Checked roads, um, some potholes, line of sight issues, bushes over current rail that we got complaints about. Weeded the garden of town office, trimmed sidewalk by March road, um, grass between the road and sidewalk. Put up a new sign on ladder drive, repaired a washout and did some ditching over the hard road. Filled a sinkhole on steamboat work road, um, did some working on repair work for John here, backup. And picked up some speed bumps from the town and mountain desert. Um, town and mountain desert has donated them to us. Um, we're gonna do an experiment on light house road.
Didn't we do that a long time ago? Wasn't there speed bumps down there at one point in time?
People asked.
People been asking.
I thought there was at one point in time. I guess it was further down.
It was on the park.
Just the park, yeah.
I was down to Wanda's house and I tell you what, I could not believe the amount of cars that go up and down that road and people walking. I was amazed. I was like, I'm gonna be a car counter here. I'm gonna sit here. I bet you there's five hundred cars in no time. I mean, it's just unbelievable how many go back and forth.
Um, Harbor Master cleaned up Wharf, uh, the hoist, um, reinstalled, uh, did a vessel rescue, a lot of PR, trying to float work. A lot of work with trying to get a handle on the dumpster, which is always fun. People could use it appropriately, that'd be a big help, but, you know, not gonna happen. And work on getting boats and buildings. Um, and over the last few weeks, I am continuing my work with FEMA public assistance.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. Suggestions for the next meeting? Date of the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to confirm the date of the next meeting from Monday, August twelfth at five PM at the town office.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, August twelfth, twenty twenty-four, five PM at the town office.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, seems there was something we're gonna bring up for the next meeting. I can't remember what it was.
Oh, um, the sustainability committee.
Oh, yeah, modifying the bylaws.
Yeah, I can add that to the next one. Yep. And if you do need something, Jesse, so it doesn't hold up, I know it's hard to get people to contractors and stuff to, you know, with the building, the Harbor Master Shack, just let us know. We could do something in the meantime if we had to. All right, um, all those in favor? Motion returned. All those in favor?